Good evening, everybody. I am reconvening to open session, the regular meeting of the Fairview District 72 Board of Education. It is October 18th at 7:05. We have already established that we have a quorum. I would like to request that all members of the public be respectful of everyone at this meeting. Please ensure that you have silenced your phones and please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, ready? Okay. We are going to start with approving minutes of the regular enclosed meetings of September 20th, 2023. May I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of September 20th, 2023?
Sure, moved.
I'll second.
Thanks. Anyone have any comments or corrections or questions? No? All right. Well, all those in favor approving the minutes of September 20th, 2023, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, minutes have been approved. Next, we have the approval of payments of bills. May I have a motion? Sorry. May I have a motion and a second to approve the payments of the bills in the amount of $305,494.26?
So moved. I'll second.
Okay, anyone have questions about the bills? No? Okay, will the board secretary please call a roll call vote?
Yes, Christine Soika?
Yes.
Sage Phillip?
Yes.
Jaclyn Boujde? Yes. Sargon Guliana?
Yes.
Raphael Cabor?
Yes.
Diana Diakakis? Yes.
Bills are approved. All right, we're gonna move on to parent teacher PTA report.
Good evening. We had lots of fun stuff going on with the PTA. We had our first successful 5K event. Lots of parents and volunteers, lots of raffles. It was fun to see the community come out. It was the first time it was held at our new track. And I think everyone had a great time. There's a few things going on with the PTA. We're having a Halloween, huge Halloween party that people do love. That's coming up Friday, October 27th. Room parent party that parents are allowed to come in and volunteer is on October 31st. Really, a lot of behind the scenes, but exciting things. And then our next general PTA meeting is November the 14th. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And next item is school activity report. Does anybody from the board or administration have any good news that they want to share? Mike?
That would be me. Well, I'll start. Good evening, everyone. Since we last met, I'd say the biggest highlight for across the entire building were our two curriculum nights. It was just great to have both the events back in the auditorium. Showcase the building and the progress that was made. You know, there was a lot of excited middle school families as well, primary families to see all the changes. So that was a nice glimpse. Sorry if I'm cutting in and out. So thank you to families, to everyone that participated in that. And our staff did an amazing job with their presentations, too. We're wrapping up in middle school, wrapping up our fall athletics season. We just wrapped it up. Our varsity boys soccer team got first place in the...
Is that better? Is that better? Perfect. Sorry about that. Thank you. So we had our first kindergarten through eighth grade connectedness event. It's our first of four planned for this school year. A team of teachers came together this summer, some of which are in our audience tonight, to help plan what the activities will be, the themes for each time we come together as a community. It's an awesome opportunity for our older students to be role models for our younger students as well. So the first one was a couple of weeks ago, and then we have three more planned throughout the school year as well. So that's my good news.
Thank you. Sorry to throw that curveball. Mr. Lepaca, do you mind repeating what you said so that the audience members can hear it? Thank you.
Yeah, so I know, I think I started off talking about our curriculum nights, which were a hit to be back in the building for middle school and for primary, to have two separate evenings. Our staff did some amazing presentations for families. We had a lot of help from student council, representation from some of our parent groups. So those evenings are always ones that we look forward to. And we obviously showcased some of the new parts of the building, which was really cool. And families were really excited to get a sneak peek at all the progress that was made. And then also, I had mentioned that our boys varsity soccer team went undefeated in the regular season. And then the conference tournament, played in the championship, and lost to a really, really good Old Orchard team. And the sportsmanship of our boys was great. The weather was, it was a Wednesday night, it was brutal, it was raining. I think my kids were not under umbrella, we were there, but most everyone else was under umbrella. So that was fun chasing them around. But the girls volleyball team then followed up with their tournament this past weekend. The JV team got third place in their tournament, which was great. And the varsity got fifth. And sixth grade volleyball wrapped up at around the same time. And now we're on to girls basketball, and that will be followed by boys basketball after winter break. And I think that's it. I think I got everything. So thank you.
I'm just gonna echo that being in the room as a parent, or being in the school as a parent on curriculum night, just the aura in the room was so contagious. Everybody was so excited to be there, to hear about the teachers, to see the new building. And it was just really a breath of fresh air, I think, for everyone to actually see the, you know, months of construction and sort of the output. So that was super nice. And my boys have not stopped talking about their big buddies. And so the program is working great. It's really exciting and fun. So I just wanted to echo those two as a parent who's, who I get the, you know, the feedback from the kids. And so I thought I wanted to share that.
I just wanted to say when we went to the JV volleyball tournament on Saturday, it was my first time, obviously, with Alexia, but Mr. Stoneberg was amazing. Amir was there as well. But I ordered pom poms for the parents, green ones, and we went crazy. That Parkview School had their, like, athletic director go in their, like, room to get signs and pom poms of their own. guest Kristen was there. We had a lot of fun, and the kids had a lot of fun. It was fun to be together, and then we all went out for pizza. So it was nice to have everyone together. Lots of fun. All right, next is board discussion items. If the superintendent could please introduce the reports?
Sure. Our first report for this evening was the construction update. Jack Hayes was not feeling well today, so I offered to give the report. And at this point, we're really getting closer and closer to completion. The library, I'm so excited to say, will be receiving furniture on Monday. Our books are returning to us on Wednesday, which I can't wait for. And then we're going to kind of play it by ear as to when we're gonna open it to students, because we'd like to give Ms. Bastian enough time to really move in and get settled. And then we will hopefully open it to students maybe the week of October 30th, the following week. But like I said, we're just not sure how long it will take, and we don't want to rush her. She's been so incredibly patient. There doesn't seem fair to rush things at this point. So we're very excited about that development. You'll notice at the front of the building, the frames for the glass at the front entrance, as well as at the multipurpose room, are being installed. So it's really starting to take shape, and you can kind of imagine what it's really gonna look like. We're still a little ways out on glass for the multipurpose room with the front entrance, the Falcon's Beak, as we like to call it, or the Nike Swish. We are much closer on, so hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll be finishing that off. The landscaping's going in all around. Sod is going down today, the rest of the week, in the back and the front. The tennis courts have been completely removed. The asphalt and cement there all ground up, and so they're prepping that area to lay down new concrete and to get those courts put back together. The courts will be a basketball court and two tennis courts that will also be lined for pickleball. I'm not a pickleball player, so I'm not quite sure how that works. But it should be a really great improvement for not only our school to use, but for the community to use. So things are moving along really nicely. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that people have regarding the project. There are a lot of small things that will need to be addressed. The punch list is close to 100 pages long. So there are a lot of smaller types of things, and it's gonna take quite a while to get through all of that. But the majority of the project is nearly finished. Good? Okay, thank you. Next up, at one of our prior board meetings, we had talked about, you know, the new positions that were added for this school year. And we're so grateful for the board's support in bringing these new positions and letting us try new things. That's one of the things that is so exciting about being at Fairview, is that we're really allowed to be innovative and have the opportunity to bring on new personnel or implement new programs. And so this evening, we've invited Sean Masterton, our new Director of Student Success, and Mike Lepaca to present about the school-wide student expectations that we've embarked upon this year, how the new position and role is going, and what types of things Sean's involved with. Just so you can get a sense of, you know, at least this one position, kind of where things stand and what we've been working on. So I'll hand it over to you, Mike. Are you gonna start us?
Great, thank you so much. And Sean is the lovely gentleman behind me, hiding behind the podium, sorry. We moved over, and he'll be presenting in a little bit just about some of the things that he's doing. So first, just to echo what Dr. Whitaker said, you know, our team and our staff and the kids are very grateful to be able to have this position at Fairview. Just in the short time we've been together, it's just been really great to see Sean in particular in action and students being receptive to him and to many of the initiatives that we've started. But just to provide some background, the Student Success Coordinator position was approved in February of 2023. Many of the highlights of the role and the focus and the conversations that we had in creating it and being very mindful of making it about success, but then also some of the things that we knew would be very beneficial in the building, is first to focus in on interventions to help students successful in school, addressing things in social, emotional needs for our students. So that was really priority number one, is having that focus in mind for this position. And then additionally, how can we have a person in the building that can support staff in areas such as attendance, or our MTSS process, or our multi-tiered system for supports for students? So that, and coupled with the restorative practices for students when there is conflict or there are situations that need to be addressed, were all the things that we were really focused in on in creating that position. So currently, the role is partnered with many of those teams across our building, what we call our SEL team, Social Emotional Learning Team, our Related Services Team, our Instructional Coach, and the Administrative Team. So Sean has been working really closely with all of those staff members. The implementation of the role, as we mentioned, Mr. Masterton was hired as a Student Success Coordinator in the summer of 2023. Pretty quickly, Sean was eager to get to work. So he was on many of our summer curriculum teams and committees that the board was so wonderful for approving that highlighted many of the initiatives that we wanted Mr. Masterton to focus on with our staff and students. One being our school-wide expectations and having all of our staff members and students across the building kind of speak the same language when it comes to what our expectations are in shared spaces all over the school. So that was one of the biggest things that we did. Additionally, Sean implemented a reward system through PBIS, which many of your children probably have been talking about, which I don't want to steal his thunder, because he'll speak to that. And then also, we established what we're calling our grade level problem-solving teams, which is kind of the first layer of identifying students that need support in anything. Maybe it is attendance, maybe it's a student that we noticed that is coming into the building tardy frequently. And what are some things that we can do at that first level of being able to support students and families? Key responsibilities up until this point, now that we've lived it since we've been in school, Mr. Masterton has had active supervision around the building. He probably puts in, I don't know, a good 15,000 to 20,000 steps a day, maybe more. I don't know for sure. But he is all over the building during supervisions of arrival and dismissal, all of the lunch periods that he is able to make when he doesn't have other obligations with meetings, dismissal by buses, and anything that is students and their presence, he is there. So it's been really great to see him so visible throughout the school. One of the main things that we didn't want to lose sight of, and I think that Sean will speak to this in a little bit, is our school-wide expectations, but then also making sure that we're focusing on the discipline and the outcomes of that if we don't meet expectations. So some of the work that we did this summer was creating a discipline referral chart for staff, helpful for staff, that really focuses on level one to three behaviors, and then also what a level four behavior is. And kind of creating some differentiation on things that staff can handle within their classrooms or within their conversations with students, but then also when it's important to get Sean involved or an administrator involved or anybody else that might be available to support them with something that doesn't meet an expectation. So we did link that flow chart on there for you to view. If you wanted to look, if you have any questions, you can let us know. He has been also utilizing the PBIS referral program that's built into the rewards, too. So what that is, is it creates a database for us. Anytime there is a behavior that does need to be documented, it's in the program for us to be able to view and keep track of any trends or places in the building that seem to be, you know, more hotspots when there are behaviors that happen, times of the day, by period, by grade. So the referral process on PBIS was an excellent bonus that even when we were looking at the rewards element, we added as we were adopting it, and it's been absolutely wonderful. It's really nice to be able to have, for our administrative team, to be able to see when a teacher or when Sean puts in a referral, and then when we get it on across our computer and we can kind of get a sense of what's happening in real time. So that's been really great. And then he's obviously consistently communicating everything that I just talked about, both the success portion of it, and then also students potentially needing some intervention for behavior to students and families when they come up. So I did want to give Sean an opportunity to speak about some of the other things that he's doing as well. So with that being said, I introduce you, Mr. Sean Masterton.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting me here tonight, too. First, I want to thank everybody here at Fairview, the staff, students, and parents. They've been so great to get me acclimated to everything going on here at Fairview. It's a great school, and I'm honored to be here. So PBIS stands for Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. It's a three-tiered approach to provide support to all students in the school. Evidence-based, explicit teaching and reteaching of expectations. I'll go into a little bit more of that later. A tool to build positive school climate and culture. We don't want to focus always on the negatives. We want to reward the positives, and that's a lot what this system does. What PBS is not is, as you see up there, prepackaged curriculum, the abandonment of discipline. That is still a big portion of this. Bribery for good behavior and ignoring inappropriate behavior or a quick fix. It's very similar to the MTSS system, where it's a tiered level system. Tier one is for all students, tier two and three are for more when we're working on those interventions. But instead of academics, we focus very much on behavior, and we want to reinforce that good behavior. Okay. I like how this slide really explains, you know, some of the things that we're trying to accomplish. We can't expect students from different backgrounds and homes to know the expectations in school. I come from a special needs background, and often teachers would come to me about problematic behavior. And I would ask, is this a skill deficit or a performance deficit? Now, if the skill deficit, it's necessary for us to teach the student exactly what the skill is so they understand how to perform it. If it's a performance deficit, we go to the other side where we use discipline, because the student is consciously choosing not to follow the expectation. You might have seen these green posters throughout school. Mike, Colleen, and Carly did a great job creating expectations for our students. Students receive points for showing a good example of these expectations up there. So how does this really all work? An example I can use is in the lunchroom. We've been working with students on the expectation that they are to quiet down when a staff member walks up to the microphone for directions. Linking that to our green poster under be respectful is listen and follow directions. Our students receive three PBSI points, PBIS points, if they quiet down without any verbal cues. They receive two points if there is one short verbal cue or reminder and quiet down immediately. They only receive one if it still takes a few moments to quiet down after the one cue. Now, if they don't quiet down, that's where the reteaching, the expectation, and discipline comes in. First, we go over what the expectation is, and then we practice it. So we got to this point in a grade level a couple of weeks ago, and I had them line up for recess while the other grade level went out to recess, because they quieted down in a good, quick time. Then after they lined up for recess, I had them sit back down, they were talking and socializing. After we explained the expectation, when I walked up to the microphone, they quieted it down very quickly. And we explained to them, that's exactly what the expectation is. So what do they do with all these points? Well, they get rewards. Students can purchase rewards with points. Some of these include what you see here. Middle school tends to like the food rewards, so we're gonna get some more tangible items. Primary is motivated more by, like, little toys. So fourth graders actually just purchased some today. So if anybody has a fourth grader here, they might have come home with some little PBIS toy. I've been contacting local businesses and sports teams for some swag. Some of the, that have responded, the Cubs actually sent us an autographed Kyle Hendricks, like, picture, poster. The Wolves sent us actually two free tickets to any game. So, and some of those bigger items that we're getting from sports teams or businesses, we might be using as kind of like a raffle. And in this case, students can use their points to buy tickets. So let's say, you know, the Wolves tickets are 10 points each, and the student has 100 points. They might decide to throw all 100 points in there to get 10 chances at the raffle. In my previous school, we had a similar PBIS system. We did something that was a staff versus students dodgeball game, which was lots of fun for the kids. And thank goodness I did that on a Friday, because Saturday I was not moving around very quickly. Students also have been sending me lots of suggestions for rewards, besides the tangible rewards. Mrs. Walder's class sent me an idea that have like a game room buy-in during lunch recess, especially when it gets colder, when kids like to stay in a little bit more. Or, you know, I've heard from some of the younger level or younger grades that they would like to do, like, lunch with a staff member. So this all been very exciting. It's pretty much under my presentation. Does anybody have any questions I can answer?
Just a comment, my daughter is a sixth, seventh grader, sorry. They love the PBIS even at that grade, and they like the food items. So, thank you.
Thank you. That's good to hear.
Can any teacher give, like, these reward points throughout the school for any student? Or is it specific to, like, their classroom teachers?
It's not just any teacher, it's actually any staff member.
Any staff.
Yeah. So a staff member can be walking down the hall. Say, for example, a student drops their books. Another student goes over there and helps them out. That staff member can give them some PBIS points.
It's really, the technology makes it really easy, too. Can you tell them a little bit about how easy it is?
Yeah. We can use our phones, and actually, like, we've given them some QR codes. In the primary grades, we're putting it on their planners. And on the upper grades, we are putting it on their Chromebooks. And basically, you just hit the app on here, you hit a button to scan and give them points. It gets really quick. So, or you can just type in their name really quick while you're walking through that hall when you find, you know, when that student drops the books and you want to reward the other student for helping them out, type in real quick and they get a reward like that, or points like that.
And last question. Are parents able to sort of see, like, how a child, like, reward-wise?
Points?
Yeah, just, just to, you know, have an understanding of...
Yes, we were figuring this out, actually, like, digging into this a little bit today. We found out they can access the points with clever, so all the students can. They can access, see their points, and they also have rewards up there. Now, I don't, we don't have, like, the food rewards for primary. So, like, K through four does not see the food rewards. But, you know, they see all those little toys up there that, and Crocs and, or Crocs Charms and everything else. Meanwhile, like, I have those little toys set for primary, while fifth, sixth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth are seeing much more of those food rewards.
And points can't be taken away, right?
No, no, not at all. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Is the data used at the end of the year to look at how many points were given? Or how does that work?
Yeah, we can run reports and about all types of data in this program. Besides the points, we can, like, how Mr. Lepaca was saying, we can run reports on discipline to see where the hotspots are. You know, we can, we've talked about, like, having, like, the ultimate PBIS student who's, like, earned the most points. Lots of more things are coming. We have a huge list of rewards that we're looking to try out. But this is just kind of the beginning right now, is what we got up there.
We can also see which staff members are using it frequently and seem to be comfortable with it. We can see which, you know, how many points they're giving, how many they may not, if they're using the referral system. And so we think that will be helpful, too, so that we can know who might need a little bit of extra help with it, or maybe their comfort level just isn't there yet. But there are a lot of things that we can look at. Part of what we're trying to accomplish is a sense of ownership of every staff member over rewarding students, but also feeling empowered if they see a child, you know, running down the hallway about to bump into someone, that they, too, can say, whoa, this is not the way we are in the hallway. You know, we want every adult to feel as if they can, you know, communicate with the children positively or negatively. So we need everyone's eyes on everything that's going on, because there's a lot. And it's a big building with a lot of students. And so the more the adults can feel empowered to be able to step in, we want them to be able to.
Yeah, and that very much goes with those green posters and those common expectations. Voice level is one thing we worked on over the summer. So, and we got that from, more primary was doing voice level like zero, one, two, three, four, five, and we've used it now all the way up into middle school.
I was thinking something along those lines of what you were mentioning, Cindy, but I think it also can build positive interactions between staff and students. I know my daughter had something in the hallway, and I think that interaction may have not have happened otherwise, you know? But now it does kind of help build those relationships in the building. It's great.
Yeah. It's fun to catch kids doing good stuff.
Yeah.
Just for the one thing that I was gonna mention when I stood up, but I think Dr. Whitaker hit upon it, and to what Jackie was saying, as an administrator, too, when we were speaking, that any adult can have a part of this, and that's, we'll get everyone on board, but bus drivers, staff in the kitchen. What I find myself trying to do is previously, I always just assumed the middle schoolers would act a certain way in spaces, because they've always been there. So like, in the lunch line, your children say, almost every single one of them say, "Thank you." They say, "Please," they go through the line. And then before, it was just kind of like, okay, that's what they should do, because that's what they should do. So now I find myself wanting them to know I'm recognizing that, not just by saying, "Thanks for saying thank you and please." So that's been really nice, is like, an administrator or someone that isn't in a classroom, just being able to say, like, all right, if we're all at a level one, you know, within the minute, everyone will get three points, because that's a nice structure. So for us, I think it's really nice, because we can do those things. And one day, I was just in the hallway as students were walking, and it's a good way to get to know a lot of the fifth graders' names, even though I know most of them. As they came up to me, I just said, yeah, what's your, what's your first and last name? And they would tell me, and I would just give them points for walking. They'd be like, what was that for? I'm like, you're walking, like, right next to the expectation, it says you're supposed to be doing that. So eighth graders notice it, because sometimes they think they get the burden of just being the oldest, and they're always just supposed to do what they are supposed to do. But now they're seeing that buy-in. But now they're seeing that buy-in and also helping Sean, you know, at recess, do things like give kids those rewards by being the ones to scan in the items for them. And so it's just been a nice little community thing too. So, so thank you, Sean. That was great.
Any other questions? Great, thank you so much. Okay, our next item is the review of board policies. This is our second reading of the board policies. As I indicated in my memo in the packet, there are twelve policies. None of them are, have substantive changes. Part of being a part of the Illinois Association of School Boards is they help keep our policies updated. And sometimes that just means making sure footnotes and cross-references are as, as current as they should be. So there's really, you really don't have any decisions to make in terms of the policy language itself. These are all just recommended updates. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but it's sort of, you know, it's just sort of a business as usual type of situation. Sometimes the board will have a policy where you have to make, you know, important decisions about components within the policy. And so that would require a different type of discussion. But for this evening, none of these, you know, require that type of in-depth discussion. So like I said, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. We would be recommending that you approve these policies later on in the meeting. Questions? No? Okay. Next up is the superintendent's report for October. I'm just scrolling to it through all those board policies. So give me a moment. Okay. Highlights for this month, it's been really fun to plan a grand opening and ribbon cutting ceremony for Saturday's November eleventh. While I, like I said earlier, I don't think we'll be one hundred percent perfectly finished. We're going to be really, you know, in a good place by then. So hoping all of you will join us. We're sending a postcard to the community. Once we have the postcard out, we'll be hitting social media with it, reaching out to alumni. Retired teachers are very interested in coming back. So we're looking forward to, you know, just a really nice event. It will be from one till three P M with a ribbon cutting right at one fifteen. And then sort of a free flowing type of event where people, you know, can take tours of the school and wander, will have snacks and a special giveaway that day. So hopefully people will be able to come out and join us. We're really excited about that. A couple of weekends ago, we had the great PTA five K event. It was, I think, a huge success. It was really nice to spend time with families and friends. There were some serious runners out there, but there were a lot of walkers and a lot of people just having fun, which was great. So we're so appreciative that that event continues because it's a really nice community building opportunity. We are undergoing a five-year compliance audit next week. And this is just an extremely detailed look at almost everything that we do. And so it only occurs once every five years, but the auditors from the regional office of education will come in and look at everything from our personnel files to make sure they have everything that they're supposed to have to the professional development opportunities we offer to teachers, to curriculum mandates. To just an inspection of the building for life safety issues. So it's a pretty intense review, but once you've moved through it, there's always something you learn that you, maybe you didn't realize you were supposed to do or that you need to improve upon. But it's also very reassuring because you find out you're doing a lot of things the way they should be. So we'll look forward to having it over, but you know, I'll be happy to report to the board about that outcome next month.
How long is the audit? How long does it take?
The auditors will probably be here for two to three days because we're a pretty small district. But they do like to go to visit. They'll visit the nurse's office to make sure all the, the student records are as they should be. You know, they'll, they'll pretty much be all over the building. So it takes, it does take a bit of time.
And do you know how long it takes for them to produce a report?
I, I'm hopeful that the report will be provided to us within a week or so. I think that, you know, from my past experience, the report has been shared pretty quickly. However, they do sit down and they will meet with me at the end and kind of walk me through, you know, anything that they saw that was of concern or any questions that they have. So by the time they're leaving, I'll have a really good sense of sort of where things stand. So thank you to everyone in the audience who's helped me compile documents and other items that are required. It's been a, a really big task. Let's see, other than that, we had our October Institute Day, which was fantastic. Half of our staff participated in math curriculum training. Being about a month into using the new math curriculum is really great timing. Because, you know, staff definitely had some questions about things. And then the other half of the staff participated in CPR recertification and Heimlich. We require our staff to be trained so that in the event of an emergency, they can jump in. And so that's another important thing that we do every two years to keep everybody certified. So those are some of the highlights. If there was anything else on the report, I'd be happy to answer questions or provide more information for you. Okay, thank you.
All right, next item is our board committees and representatives. We will start with Ed Brad, Representative Ruff. Do you have any updates?
Yes, so I attended the annual kickoff luncheon, which was a couple of weeks ago. It was awesome as just like the breakfast was that we attended together, Dr. Whitaker. And it was basically the annual kickoff, so it was them going over the schedule for the upcoming year, as well as there was a presentation that I'll share with the group. And there's also going to be an additional training on it. It was around AI and K through twelve. So it was really interesting, this presentation around students, the pros and cons for students and staff, how teachers are, could potentially utilize it to, you know, grade papers. But how students are using it in good ways and bad ways. So it's, you know, scary and interesting at the same time. But the, the presentation was great, so I'll share with everybody so you have it. And then if you're looking to learn a little bit more about this AI in K through twelve, there is going to be a, another session on November first, which is Wednesday. From the Learning Institute Center, I'll share the link of that as well. I think it's a virtual session that you could attend. Learn a little bit of that, but that was, that was kind of, and a lot of networking as well with the other board members from different districts, other superintendents. Overall, it was a great event.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Jackie, any updates for NTDSC?
There was no meeting for NTDSC in October. We'll meet in November before the next board meeting. But I did attend the ribbon cutting ceremony at the new building in Malloy and that was very nice. They, we got to tour the building, see a lot of familiar faces from Fairview and some of the old board members. So that was a, a nice event.
And then Ms. Soika, any further updates than what Sylvia had to say?
I wasn't able to attend the exec meeting and I I don't think you were either. But I did get a recap. I, there was just lots of discussion about the Halloween party because that's coming up. Which is, it's going to be great, assuming we have enough volunteers. So that's my little plug.
Yes, everybody volunteer.
To, to please tell any friends so that we can have a great event. Having sort of this be my first year as a, as a PTA member and a mom. There is so much work that goes into the events and I got to see that firsthand with the five K. And while they're really exciting for the community, it does take a lot of work by multiple people doing a lot of things. I think that many people aren't privy to, to see or know. So it's nice to sort of sit on this side, but we will need some more volunteers to help operate the event to have it continue. But aside from that, there was not much else that was discussed.
Awesome. Next up is Freedom of Information. Regarding Freedom of Information Act requests, I can report that there were two Freedom of Information Acts received since the last board meeting and that they were responded as to as required. Information items and correspondents?
There were two and I think they're summarized for you, Mrs. Boujde. Thank you.
We received two information, information items and correspondences. The first item comes from Mike Lapaca and family thanking the board for their thoughtful gift and words of condolences. The second item is from Stacy Glasscott thanking the board for the beautiful flowers sent for her recovery. Both mentioned their appreciation to be part of the Fairview family.
Awesome. Next up is public comment. At this time, I'd like to invite members of the audience to address the board in public comment. If you wish to address the board, please come to the microphone, state your name. A three-minute limit will be set. The board secretary will keep the time. And I can confirm that we had no online public comments as well. All right, we are moving on to actionable items. May I have a motion and a second to approve the board policies as discussed?
So moved.
A second.
With the board secretary, please call roll call vote.
Sargon Guliana?
Yeah.
Sage Philip?
Yes.
Raphael Kabor?
Yes.
Christine Soika?
Yes.
Diana Diakakis?
Yeah.
Jaclyn Boujde?
Yes.
Okay, great. Moving to items for future consideration, does anyone have any items that they want to consider for next month?
I'll just give a quick preview, a couple of the things we're working on for next month. We will be bringing our preschool program proposals to the board for your consideration. So everything from cost to class size to curriculum. You know, we've been working on this for close to a year now and we're ready to put forth our formal proposal to the board for your, hopefully for your approval. Our intention would be to allow families to begin applying for the preschool program in January. And next month we'll go through all of the details. And I, I think you'll be excited to hear about it. We're really excited about it. Carly has really shepherded this project along and so I'm very appreciative for all of her hard work. But we're excited to bring the proposal and look forward to discussing it. So, so there's that. And then we will also be bringing a student achievement report to the board in regards to our math tests from this fall and our student scores there, as well as the Illinois Assessment of Readiness. Those scores are released on October thirty-first, Halloween. But combined with that, we are going to have our staff who work to help support students who may be struggling, as well as those who are on the flip side, who are achieving beyond some of our expectations or grade level expectations. So that you can hear about those various programs that have been set in motion. You know, some of them new this year, but also some that are, were recently added in the last couple of years. But I think it will be helpful for the board to not only hear, you know, where our student achievement is falling at this point. But what we're doing to kind of respond to that data. So those are two things that we're working on for next month. And if there's, you know, anything else that you have on your mind that you'd like to hear about, you know, always feel free to bring that up now. Or certainly, you know, email me. I know sometimes people don't think of things on this, you know, right in the meeting. But, you know, we're here to try, try to provide you any information you need to be able to, you know, know the programs you're supporting and the decisions you're making. So.
Just wanted to add one more thing. The ISB conference is November eighteenth.
So the IASB.
IASB, sorry, is November eighteen.
I wouldn't send you to an ISB conference, but, yes. So the triple I conference, which is sort of the biggest conference in the state for school board members, school business officials, school administrators. Takes place in Chicago, November eighteenth is, November eighteenth. It's, you know, we highly encourage board members to attend. It, it's interesting. You can definitely learn a lot. The networking with other board members from across the state is very eye-opening and I think that you all can learn a lot from each other. So we would encourage you to attend and I will, I'll follow up tomorrow with sending out a link to the conference guide. And if you'd like to go, we'll get you signed up. Okay?
All right, may I have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting of the Fairview Board of Education at seven forty-nine P M?
So moved.
Second.
All right, will the board secretary please call roll call vote?
Yes. Raphael Kabor?
Yes.
Christine Soika?
Yes.
Sargon Guliana?
Yes.
Sage Philip?
Yes.
Jaclyn Boujde?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.